To order the WPCA and regular town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut to order, it is Tuesday, May 20th, and it is 6:35. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McMillan.
Present.
Councillor Abelson.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Goode.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Palladino.
Here.
Next item, do I hear an approval for the minutes of the April 22nd, 2025 special WPCA and town council meeting?
You're here.
Second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councillor Abelson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Now into the WPCA agenda. First item is correspondence, citizen statements regarding WPCA. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, going on to unfinished business. There is none listed. New business, sewer flows from Lake Gallard water treatment plant.
Madam Mayor, Chris Holden is on vacation, so the part of Chris Holden will be played tonight by Rory Burke.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. You should have a memo in your packets from the town engineer. The regional water authority is requesting an amendment to the existing agreement. As I'm sure you're aware, they've been making upgrades to their treatment facility on Fox Road. The result of that is going to be increased efficiency, meaning lower output into the sewer system. So the amendment that they're requesting would reduce the average daily flow, and there would be a corresponding reduction in the fee that they pay that's based in the agreement, the formula for the payment.
Okay, so do we know what the reduction has been so far in their flow rate? I mean, I know I read it, and it said that they've seen reductions, but did they provide any, what those numbers actually are? Or are we just taking their word that it is? I mean, I saw the letter from the W, from, you know, the water authority in regards to it. So do we have to take action on this tonight?
No, no. And Chris Holden is here for the June meeting. He'd love to wait.
I would, since we just got this, I mean, it was in our packet, and there's been no discussion on it. I think it would be a good idea if we tabled it and wait until, so do I have a motion to table this?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councillor Miller. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? This will be tabled until the June meeting. Citizen's statements and petitions regarding WPCA. Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on into the regular town council meeting. First is community events and presentations. Charles Larkins honored them with a flag ceremony.
Good evening. I'm here again representing the North Branford Women's Club. They're having their annual honor them with a flag event, and I appreciate all the help we've gotten in the past, and look forward to having a good ceremony this year. Again, you're all invited to come to the ceremony, and if you'd love to speak during the ceremony, please let me know. I'll be emceeing again, so you can just show up, and we'll let you have the mic, and you can have your piece, say your piece.
Is it, is it on June 14th?
No, it's going to be held Thursday before. We didn't want to try to push the weekend in case school's out and plans and stuff. So Thursday the 12th, at 6:30.
6:12, okay.
All right.
And it's, it's here at Town Hall?
Yes, right in front of the Town Hall. There is no rain day. If it rains, there is no rain day, it gets canceled, and that's it. But the flags will go up, actually go up the Sunday before, and I'd appreciate, again, this year, any help and assistance, sound system, chairs, use of the property, that's wonderful, thank you. I just can't say enough. It's been, it's been good for a number of years now, and I, we're looking forward to another successful year.
Okay. I'm sorry, what time is it? On the 12th, what time?
6:30.
6:30.
6:30, June 12th, it's a Thursday night.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
The next item is Henry Zeiken dedication plaque on the Veterans POW monument.
Hi, I'm Henry Zeiken, I'm from Branford. I was originally from North Branford. This is my son Sam, he's the Eagle Scout, and that would be Vietnam veteran, stolen. So my wife, unfortunately, is in Italy, wanted, she couldn't make it.
Of course not.
So what we, what she wanted to do was put a small plaque on the thing, just so that they know that my son Sam was the project of, he was an Eagle Scout. So we noticed that there was a plaque on it for Kramer, Missing and Action. So probably put this on the back, just, just so they would know.
Okay, and so is there, who would be in charge of ordering the plaque and putting it out?
We, we would just get it.
You would, okay.
We'd get it, and then, I don't know, we'd check to see if it would just even be glued on to the stone.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay.
And I, you should, I think, you had something there which shows the size that my wife wanted, I think it was like maybe three by six.
Yeah, let me see if there is information in our packet here. Yes, it's on page 46 of our packet. Okay, so actually, there is, so, so while you're still here, there's an agenda item later on in our agenda to approve this, but if I can have a motion from someone that we can just move item 13B.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, item 13B moved to, we're going to put it here to?
7C.
7C. Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councillor Diamond, to move item 13B. Yes, B.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for them while they're here?
Great, you did that project, thank you. You guys Vietnam Vet, and Jimmy was his friend, so I like seeing that there.
Yes, I am.
Are you? Thank you for your service, sir.
Any other questions?
No.
You're good?
You're good?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are now going to, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. So now we will take action on item 13B is?
Make the motion that the North Branford Town Council authorizes the addition of a small plaque by the Zeiken family to the town's Vietnam Veterans Memorial, indicating it was an Eagle Scout project of Salvatore Zeiken in 1996.
Second.
Motion was made by Councillor Palladino, was made by Councillor Palladino, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. You are free to do the, do the plaque and have it installed.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First one is economic development.
I did attend the meeting, but I have nothing to report.
Okay. Park and Recreation, the meeting for this month has been canceled at this time due to the special council meeting next week, and has not been rescheduled at this time. Police Commission?
The Police Commission meeting for May was canceled.
Okay. Fire Commission?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we met May 1st. It was actually a very quick meeting. Basically, I just wanted to recognize it's EMS Week, EMS Week celebration for our emergency management, and I would also like to just read the department calls for the month of April. So this is, all the calls that the, our fire department, which is both North Branford and Northland, has called. So for the month of April, there were five fire calls. There were 142 emergency medical calls. There were 11 motor vehicle accidents. There were three hazardous conditions calls. There were 10 public service and good intent calls. There were seven residential fire alarm calls. There were two commercial fire alarm calls, and there were three mutual aid calls. So the total calls for the month of April were 183. The total calls for 2025 have now been 739 calls.
Okay, thank you. Planning and zoning?
They met on Thursday last week. Nothing, nothing unusual, just business as usual.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee, Finance Subcommittee met last week. There are several items on our agenda tonight. We reviewed some RFPs. One was for the Bond Advisor, and the other is the Financial Advisor?
Bond Counsel.
Our Bond Counsel. So we have the Bond Advisor on our agenda for tonight. We also did discuss what was the night of the referendum, so the results weren't in yet, but during our meeting, we found out that the town was very successful in coming out, and we had reached the 15% on the referendum, so we knew that we would have to be adjusting the budget. And so that's what we will start doing tonight, is discussing that on there. Our next meeting will be in June, the 2nd, 3rd, the 10th, June 10th, which we might have to change, because I know that is high school graduation that night. So, so we'll see once if, we'll just do a special meeting for this, for, but, so that's it, that's all that I have on finance right now. Next is public safety.
Thanks to the town manager, we finally are going to have a meeting on May 29th at 10:00 AM with all of the parties involved, including the vendors and the members of the Public Safety Committee, and hopefully our fire chief, our police chief, and we're finally going to try to iron everything out. So I have to thank Mike for getting, it's been a monumental task to get all those vendors
A lot of people. To get it out.
Yeah, a lot of clocks to strike at once.
Okay. All right. When is that, May 29th?
May 29th, but it's at 10:00 AM at the police meeting room.
Okay. Okay. CIWWA?
Next meeting is next Wednesday, the 20th.
Okay. And blueprint?
No meeting.
Okay. Town managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The townwide budget referendum on the town council's recommended budget was held on Tuesday, May 13th. 1,901 voters turned out for 20.1%. 1,619 voters rejected the budget because it was too high. 69 opposed the budget because it was too low, and 143 voted to accept the budget. 15% of registered voters, or 1417, were needed for the results to be binding, therefore the results of this budget referendum are binding, and the council's recommended budget returns to the council this evening. Under the town's charter, the council has until June 1st, 2025, to pass a new budget. Also, under our charter, there is only the one referendum we just conducted, and there are no further referendums following council action on the budget, and the council's final action will be binding. I do want to thank our registrars, volunteers, and Town Clerk's Office at all of our elections, referendums, and primaries. They work to make sure they're smooth and accurate, and in the process of supporting our local democracy, so thanks goes out to them. And I'd also like to note, this is the first use of the new tabulators we received from the state, and there are no issues to report, which is positive, as we look forward to the coming local elections. The town fiber project is in progress. The fiber is currently being pulled from NBIS to STW. This should be completed by May 27th. Inside splicing of the fiber is begun at NBIS. Splicing needs to be done at the PD, Auger House, and STW, which is to be scheduled. The internal network installation will follow, and the target date for completion is prior to June 30th. This year, the North Branford Memorial Day Parade will be stepping, will take place on the North Branford side of town on Monday, May 26th. Step off is 10:00 AM. Gina Cox and Kathy Poston, in conjunction with our Veteran Service Commission, have been hard at work, and we've conducted some planning meetings already with the police, public safety, and public works. We're excited, have selected Kathy Poston as this year's brand marshal, and we will be receiving a flyover for this event of an F-130 provided by the 103rd Air Wing of the Connecticut Air National Guard. So I hope residents will come out and join us for this important parade and ceremony, honoring those who served and sacrificed to answer our nation's call. Want to take a moment to recognize National Police Week, and observe that our, our great folks at the North Branford Police Department and the work that they do, National Police Week was last week. Also, as Councillor Abelson mentioned, National EMS Week is this week, and it's set aside to recognize our lifesaving emergency medical personnel. Thanks go to the understanding professionals who serve our town with compassion and dedication, and provide a lifeline to our residents when they are in most jeopardy. This week also is National Public Works Week. This week marks a time that we ask that everyone please join in recognizing the tremendous efforts of our fine professionals in the North Branford Public Works Department. They perform like first responders through emergencies and events, demonstrating flexibility, innovation, and compassion as they undertake their roles on behalf of North Branford taxpayers, and our thanks go to them for everything they do. The council may remember a few months back when Bailey Salem came before you to ask permission to do her Eagle Scout project by installing an antique hay rake at the front of the Reynolds Beer's House. That project is now done, it looks great. If you have a chance to stop by and check it out, I recommend it. Parks and Recreation held a very successful touch-a-truck event last Saturday at STW Community Center, and will be holding a slam-a-jamma basketball camp from June 16th to 20th for grades three to eight at Jerome Harrison School. Congratulations to Park and Rec, they got me to say the word slam-a-jamma. Park and Rec will also be holding a safe boating and personal watercraft class on May 31st, and June 7th at the STW Gym. $20 for residents, $25 for non-residents. And they'll also be sponsoring a pet health and wellness clinic on June 13th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Stanley T. For details on these and other programs, and to register, you can visit northbranfordct.myrec.com. The libraries are holding a summer reading kickoff on June 7th, 1:00 to 3:30 at the Atwater Library. There'll be music, entertainment, crafts, and summer reading signups. Registration is not necessary. Just a reminder that I put out a monthly newsletter, by email, that goes out on the fourth Friday of every month. The next one will be this Friday, May 23rd. The newsletter contains news and announcements from the town, is a great way to keep up with what we have happening in town. There's a signup form on the front page of my page on the town website to receive the newsletter. And also, as a reminder, we have town emergency notifications available through Civic Ready. Residents can sign up for, you can text NORTHBRANFORD, no spaces, to 38276 to get emergency alerts and community notifications. You can also sign up online at northbranfordct.gov/alerts, or call 475-655-0400 to sign up via phone. Notifications go out via text, email, and phone call. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next is town managers report, the permanent project building committee.
Thank you. On the North Branford Police Department, the dampers have been installed. Data is currently being gathered on the HVAC system balance, and warranty and punch items are on, items are ongoing. North Branford High School, the punch list and closeout is ongoing, and the glass review is complete. Replacements are scheduled to take place over the summer. North Branford Intermediate School, a majority of the base project is complete. Siding replacement is ongoing, sidewalks are being reviewed for replacement. STW Project, the revised list of possible projects remains under review. Stanley T. Williams Community Center Pavilion, the slab and apron have been installed. We're awaiting railing and stair completion. Department of Public Works Building, the bid has been opened, and a recommended award will be forthcoming to the council. Edward Smith Library HVAC, PPBC is still reviewing options and recommendations, and the steep grant awards have been additionally delayed, and I'm now told we may not get notification until the state budget is settled. As you remember, we were supposed to be notified, first it was early April, then late April, and now probably have to wait until after the budget.
Okay, which is generally the beginning?
Usually the first week in June.
Okay.
But depending on who you talk to about the optimism of that actually happening and not going to a special session, I guess we'll just have to see.
Okay.
The committee did not meet last night, and they will not meet next Monday, so in consideration of the Memorial Day holiday, so the next time they'll meet is June 2nd.
All right.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to citizen's statements, petitions, and correspondence. Any citizen's statements?
Question?
Yep.
Honets Catino, 63 Glenwood Road. As far as the, the calls, the fire calls for the year so far?
Yep.
Do you have a breakdown by company as to?
No, but I, we can get it for you, but next month?
Okay.
I will have a breakdown by company as far as?
Yeah, I was just curious, because we do have the three companies?
Well, there are four.
Oh, four. And I was just wondering?
Absolutely.
Who gets the most votes?
Next month, when I read them, I will get them, I will read them.
Great, thank you.
Any other citizen's statements? Okay, on to resignations and appointments, seeing none, on to unfinished business. First item is the proposed North Branford High School Athletic Storage Building. There is a email in our agenda packet in regards to this, and it's from the superintendent of schools, and he is requesting that the town council approve this prior to the board approving it. He, it's on the board's agenda for Thursday night of this week, to move this project over to the town side. But unfortunately, at this point in time, we don't have any money budgeted in our budget. It could come out of the project, the high school project, but we don't know what the status of that, like where we are, how much is in contingency, since they have not met, they didn't meet this week, they're not meeting next week. So we can just, it's been on our agenda since July of last year, so we can just keep it on there until we see what's the amount of money is on there, and then we can just go forward. So do I have a motion to table until June?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion was made by Councillor Abelson, seconded by Councillor Zampano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And the next item is approval of the bid specs for the storage shed. That'll just stay on there. We can't do that until the project is approved at that point. On to 13, new business discussion and action. First item is fiscal '25-'26 budget, receipt of the fiscal year '25-'26 budget filing rejection at the annual budget referendum. So this is our opportunity to start talking about the budget and possible cuts, and I believe the town manager has some items.
I do, there's a memo in everyone's folder.
Out here, yep.
And the council had asked for me to go back to departments and find some additional cost savings, so I'll just briefly go through some of the items that are on this, this memo for possible reduction. Those include, under animal control, $16,000, $16 savings from the renegotiation of the animal control contract. This item's actually on your agenda later on as well. Refuse collection, I was asked to explore the idea of reduction of bulk pickup to one time per year, and in discussion with John's refuse, that would be a $15,000 savings. From engineering, if they remove the color plotter from their engineering and planning department, they plan, that's $3,500. Department of Public Works, $20,000 from brush grinding, $3,000 from end anchors, $2,000 from guardrail repairs, and $5,000 from snowplow contractors, that's $30,000 total from that department. Parks and Recreation is offering up a $4,800 reduction in the porta potty locations, essentially instead of having two at the parks, they would cut it back to one that's handicapped accessible. Still have coverage there, but we reduce the number that are out at all the parks. And they've also suggested a potential increase in revenue from membership fees being increased from $150 a year to third, adding $30 a year to $180 a year, which could result in $10,900, so that's a total of $14,800 being proposed there. Library, a $2,000 reduction in part-time, and $8,000 reduction in library books for $10,000. Information and technology, an $8,000 reduction in MUNIS modules, these would essentially be modules that after we've been working with, we've determined that we don't need them, and we can do without them. And $3,600 in reduction in MUNIS pace training, we originally have nine days, we could, we could scale that back to five. So that's a total of $11,600. In social services, again, not a hugely budgeted department, so they've offered up $788 in cutting cable, business cards, and other contractual for Fed relocation program. Town Clerk's Office, $300 reduction in paper and land records, $100 shipping charges, and 350 professional development. Again, not a big budgeted department, so that's $840 there. Tax collector offered up a couple of items for $500. The assessor offered up some things for $820. Fire Department offered up CIP funds for one of the Lucas devices for $19,925. And in human resources, $2,750 off of reducing the pre-employment medicals by five for camp councils under age 18, and reduction in background checks cost by changing vendors. So that's a total of $126,539 to start with.
Thank our department heads for coming together and giving us ideas of where to cut, possible cuts that we can do. So I also have sent out an email to all council members and asked them to come to this meeting with ideas of where they propose cuts to be. For this council here, and for the last 19 years, we, we have not had to do this, so this is new to, to us and to any other council prior to us. So we don't have any set dollar amount we're looking for. We're open to suggestions. As the town manager had published, we opened up a specific email address that town residents could send in their ideas of, for possible cuts that we would look at on there, which we have in our packet here, and we also, Mike, can you read them into the, just read, just so that it's public if they're all under, I think they're all under the 1,000-word limit?
Yes, they all are. I'd be happy to do that. First one is from Carol Denderski. "To whom it may concern, being a citizen of North Branford for 60 years, I love this town. However, I found out something over the last few months, which I found very hard to believe, but I was actually told by people involved that it is actually happening. It seems that our Board of Education and the town of North Branford have in place a system where if you do not take the health benefits offered to you, and decide to take your spouse's benefits, then the town pays you out for your benefits. Where in the world is this legal or morally right? There is not another town in our state that actually pays you out for not taking the health benefits. I feel strongly that if this-" I feel strongly that if this buyout was eliminated, then you would be amazed at how much more the town could come up with toward the pay down of our bonds for the new high school and the new Taj Mahal Police Department. Just a suggestion from a concerned citizen. By the way, thank you for all the hard work you do. Carol Denderski. I should preface all these by saying, just because they are coming out of my mouth doesn't mean that everything in the contents is actually accurate, because there is some, these are opinions of individuals and some of the information in there is actually not accurate. Next one, Joseph Denderski. In the time, in this time of high energy food utility bills combined with the high cost of just living in Connecticut, it is absurd to think the average resident can absorb such a huge property tax increase. This is an unusual time and maybe the need for layoffs in all departments, including education and public safety, will be needed to reduce the budget. Some non-essential services could be cut as well as capital improvement projects and big-ticket items. A few hundred dollars increase is expected, a few thousand dollars increase is not affordable. Thank you. Next one is from Deborah Kaplan. To whom it may concern, my husband and I have been Northford residents since 1991. We are both retired and living on a fixed income. Due to the recent revaluation, our property value has increased $122,000. We appealed the revaluation immediately, but were denied. Based on the current mill rate proposed by the town, our taxes will increase by $1,355.51. We believe that even though the mill rate was reduced in the current budget, it was not reduced enough. This tax increase is not sustainable for residents of North Branford. Regards, Deborah Kaplan. Next one is from Alexa Venegas. Dear Mayor Angeloni and Board members, my husband and I bought our first home in North Branford in March of 2024. As soon as we began the house buying process, we knew we wanted to settle in North Branford for a variety of reasons. The engaging and close-knit community, the wonderful, high-achieving school system and picturesque landscape. Our experience has been nothing short of incredible. We love our neighborhood and supporting small businesses. We felt this will be our forever home. Unfortunately, with the newly proposed mill rate and our home's newly assessed value, we're very worried that our future in this beloved town. With the proposed rate, our taxes have more than doubled since the last fiscal year. With a baby on the way, we should not have to worry about our financial future in this manner. My husband also spoke to the tax assessor's office before buying our home and they reassured us they would never double our taxes within one tax year. Unfortunately, this feels like the harsh reality. My husband and I have dreams of raising our child in this incredible community, but the high taxes make it difficult to make ends meet. Please adjust the rate to ensure your residents' financial security so they can enjoy the town for all the beauty it has to offer. Sincerely, Alexa and David Venegas. Next is from Bob Meeger. I'm a North Branford citizen. I've lived here from 1966 through 1980 and again 1995 today. I'm shocked that you have to ask for suggestions on how to deal with the current budget situation, but then I realize that perhaps working for a town, you have no idea what it is like in the real world. I have been working in the same manufacturing company since 1979. One, annual raises are not automatic. This is not such a thing as cost of living increase. Two, insurance, insurances are very expensive. Each year the cost goes up, our contribution and are deductible. I have to pay the first 3250 before the insurance company pays a dime. Three, fit to size. When times are tough, my company reduces staff. The work has to be divided between the employees who stay. Four, one, the home, on the home front, we have to make cuts where avail, wherever possible. I dropped cable in our landline, cut back on dining out vacations, put off repairs when where possible, and run the same automobile. Five, close one of the libraries, sell off some of the properties we have. Did we really need such a large police station? When I voted, there were a lot of retired people in the line that simply cannot afford this increase. Short answer, cut back on expenses, no new hires. Thanks, Bob Meeger. Next is Donna Meeger. Saving suggestions. One, no wage salary increases were possible. Two, no cost of living increase. Three, no overtime. Four, 10% headcount reduction of all staff. Five, no new hires. If a position opens, transfer from within. Six, I understand we cannot cut the BOE budget, freeze it at 2024 level. Seven, no additional capital expenditures on police department for 2025. Eight, no unnecessary travel to conferences, seminars, et cetera. Nine, cut out fireworks at Corn Festival. Ten, eliminate the Corn Festival. Eleven, close one of the two libraries in town. Twelve, cut back on health insurance by one, increasing employee contribution. And two, converting to a higher deductible plan. Thanks, Donna Meeger. Next is Nicole Brzicki. Town of North Branford Council, as a lifelong resident, family of Northford, I ask you please make substantial cuts to the budget and also incentivize commercial and small business. My first and biggest cut suggestion is towards the police department. If they wanted a building that we cannot afford, cut positions. A force that big is not warranted based on their productivity. They don't do anything about the dirt bike situation. I only see patrol cars parked across the street from the police station, rarely on Route 80 and other high-speed, high-accident areas. Durham works under two state troopers. Maybe we should consider that. A second cut can be made to one of the libraries. We do not need both. And finally, bring business to Route 80 in the center of Northford. How can it hurt? Have you seen the state of both centers these days? They're dumpy. Start by finding the owner of the former IGA building for leaving it abandoned for 20-plus years. Incentivize businesses coming to our town and give tax breaks to those who fix up their current businesses. We just lost two pharmacies. We are losing TD Bank in Agway. We have nothing here. This will take some time, take some of the tax burden off of residents and bring people to our town. Next is from Linda Haelson. Hi, I don't know why below had no content of, she was, she tried to send the email twice, so that's what she's saying. So I'll retype what I sent. I already spoke at the town budget meeting, so I don't really have anything to say other than what I already stated, which is that a tax increase in the hundreds is reasonable. A tax increase of 1,500 or more in one year is not. It is going to force people on fixed incomes out of town, particularly seniors. Please look for opportunities to reduce the budget. I would start with one library, not two, and seriously reconsider the purchase of another fire engine at this time. Aside from that, I sent comments in a separate email to Mike Downs regarding the need for longer-term strategy, which I do have and I can forward to the council. Thanks, Linda Haelson. Next is from Esther Kopelik. Good morning. My question is why Public Works spending time and resources mowing an extremely steep bank on Route 80 across from the old town hall, which was knocked down? To me, it looks like an accident waiting to happen to the guys mowing due to the steep incline. Why four people and two trucks and two mowers for this job guaranteed with salary and insurance? It's a few hundred bucks easy, not to mention wear and tear on the equipment. Why can't native wildflower mix be planted and let grow natural? No need, in my opinion, to mow and maintain that area. Maybe more areas should be looked at to cut maintenance mowing. Thanks for your time, Esther Kopelik. Next is from Bernie Stepnowski. Esteemed Town Council, I'm a senior citizen and have lived in Northford since 1986. Proposed 27.84 mill rate coupled with the new revaluation yields an 8% increase in my real estate tax bill over last years. That is unconscionable and unwarranted. How does the town council justify that? Connecticut is one of the most expensive states to live in already, and this just makes the situation worse. Regards, Bernie Stepnowski. Next is from Chris Citro. Town Council, the town of North Branford is a great place to live. With that said, almost one-third of the town is open space, which includes Lake Gallard and farmland. It's time to increase the tax base with commercial and mixed development. The old town hall property should have been developed a long time ago, and instead, nothing is being done. That's just one example of many locations that are not being addressed. I have no problem with the new high school and police station, but the town cannot expect residents to make up the massive debt. The bottom line is the town needs to be developed without further delay. And the final one is from Robert Maroney. I do not have any specific ideas on what or how to cut the budget in town, however, I do have a broad suggestion. I've lived in town since 1983, raised both my sons here and now retired after taking care of my disabled wife. I have to live within our means and prioritize our spending to make ends meet on our fixed income. Sure, there are many things we would like to have, but we can't. I feel the same idea should be hold true for towns and local governments. You have a fixed income, you have to make do and prioritize your spending. While many people in this beautiful town love the open space, farmlands and lack of business, we have to face facts, these things don't bring in tax revenue. Other towns have growing commercial and other businesses in their towns and pay towards the tax base. We have very little. We have Central Plaza, which, when we moved here, was booming. Now it's mostly empty. Same with various strip malls in both Northford section as well as North Branford areas. Yes, the economy right now is cautious, but we need to get some growth in our tax revenue if we want new municipal and education, education buildings. Many folks in town are getting older, like my wife and I, and find it hard to pay for our health costs, groceries, as well as taxes for our new schools and just plain living in town. Yes, we need good schools, but good schools doesn't necessarily mean new schools. We need good public service structures such as police, public works and fire, but again, that doesn't mean new. My suggestions are twofold. One, learn to live within our means as a town. Fix up and renovate and don't borrow for new with loans on the back of the elderly in town. Two, try to lure business into town instead of making people who pay taxes move away to another state, a town or state because they can't afford to live here. Yes, the costs for everything have risen, duh. That means town employees cost more, fuel costs more, electricity to light the buildings, et cetera. Those things can't change, but the wants instead of the needs are the things to cut. Some people will be ticked off no matter what that is, but just like in your personal budgets, you can't have it all. Thank you for your time, Bob Maroney. All we received up to this afternoon.
Mike, thanks for reading that. That was probably the most rewarding 15 minutes I've had since I've been on the council, hearing that read. All of those messages from all of our citizens. And I agree with probably 95% of what they said. Thank you.
So in regards to what I, we just saw these sitting here, so thank you, Mike, for reading them. So everyone can hear, they will all be part of the record and go in the minutes and become part of our minutes. But just because we have some departments or most department heads here, I just want to address some of what we heard. So the first one was the suggestion of the police department and going to state troopers like Durham. And Chief Lovelace is here. And can you just address that and what the possibility would be of being able to do that?
Sure, I'm not going to opine on all the legal hurdles you'd have to go through, but I can tell you that the state police is already understaffed and they can't cover the areas that they have. On top of that, it's not free. So those towns that embark on that pay a very steep cost back to cover the cost to the state of Connecticut. So that's not a free service that just comes to any municipality that can't have their own police department. And if you remember a couple of years back in the news, they raised the cost back and you could go back and look at what it was costing those small towns to do that project. So is anything possible? Sure, anything's possible, but there's, there's no free service out there with the state of Connecticut, so.
It would be monumentous to try to get it.
Yeah, it'd take years to really work to all the things.
And don't most of these towns also have part-time constables to make?
To offset the cost for the state police.
To offset the cost, so you're, what are you really saving?
They still have buildings there that they have to maintain and facilities and that nature. It's not just.
And at the end of the day, can't the state police also tell us that, well, no, you already have a police department, we're not interested?
Yeah, they don't have to take it upon, so.
Because I know, I know when I worked in East Haven and we were having some issues with everything that went down and federal investigations, our management at the time says, oh, we'll just get troopers to supplement us. And the call was made and they basically laughed in our face and said, no, we not doing that. And that was 15 years ago when they weren't understaffed like this, so it's not an automatic like that.
Yeah.
Question, I don't know if you can actually tell us, but the, because I just read the number of calls for the fire department. Do you actually have a number of calls for the, for the month?
I don't have this month's, but I could tell you yearly, we do anywhere between 17 and 20,000 at this point. Calls of service, yeah.
Total.
Yeah, but I can get you last month's numbers.
No, I just want to make sure that everybody understands.
If we had a meeting a week ago, I could, I would have the number in my head, but we didn't have the meeting, so.
But I mean, what I was trying to point out is that how many calls we do in a month for the fire department.
I could tell you this, every call that the fire department was dispatched for and the police department's dispatched as well. So it's dual service.
So that's how hard you guys work.
Yeah.
And how many calls you do.
Yeah.
Just want to point that out.
Yeah.
Okay. So as long as you're up here, I just have another question that came to me from a resident also. And they had looked at the budget and they looked at the police overtime account, which was $500,000, and asked, you know, can't we schedule better? Do we, you know, to get, to reduce the $500,000, maybe we should, you know, hire more police officers so we don't have overtime. So can you just address what really makes up that $500,000?
Sure, so part of that $500,000 is also our dispatch staff. So we're 24/7 operation. And what that accounts for is their personal days, the vacation days, the holiday pay, all their CBA, what they get through their CBA for, for working and during those times. What's actually paid out in overtime is less than 20%, and that's for what we call, it shouldn't be called in there, I got to change the wording, it says routine emergencies, but that's for your, your storms, that's for your fatal accidents, that's for your large investigations, that's for when you got to fill shifts, for whatever the nature may be that comes throughout the year. So less than 20% is actually what is covered in police overtime expenditures on a staff of 26, 365, 24/7.
Okay.
And also the accountability bill made it a little bit more difficult now when it comes to RPOs.
Yeah.
You know, because now that demands us to, for overtime where you get an RPO and you got to see someone's.
So RPOs are risk protection off. So that came in the accountability bill. So whenever we go for one of those calls of service, we are mandated by the state to fill out this paperwork. That goes to the courthouse and then we're now mandated to go and sit at court for that hearing, which comes within 14 days. So that's.
And that's been happening a lot more than usual.
At least.
And we need to also, on top of that, because we deal with that a lot, with the accountability bill, the mandate of accreditation.
Yeah.
Which, again, is not free, it's man-hours, it's, it's a lot.
I mean, I could put a presentation for you for hours if you want to go down the rabbit hole, but that's.
Well, and I think that was helpful to, to understand that that's an all-encompassing account, it's not just all overtime. And the majority of it is.
That less than 20% also includes the dispatchers in that for the filling of those vacancies.
Right, so you're less than $100,000 for actual overtime.
And also regarding to resident troopers, they're not a 24-hour operation either. They have a morning, some just have a morning and evening, that's it. So there's been times where something's happened over the line where we had to go there along with other towns.
Routine, you have to go into Durham or the areas to assist for those reasons.
You know, the other thing I would like to mention, and I know that when I was at the last police commission meeting, they're putting 163%, I remember hearing that number, effort into watching what's happening. That's why they're out on the roads because, and you know, you see them parked at various places because of, we know in this state, there is a tremendous number of accidents occurring. You read about it in the paper almost every day. And I think this police department is making a real effort to try to prevent that by being out and about and catching people and watching people. So I think that's important.
So what we have in the, in the cars also is what we call NDTs or mobile data terminals. And the officers are actually doing the reports. So every time they go to a call, it's not just they're done with it and they walk away and they go to the next one or they go somewhere else. There's hours, in some cases days, of paperwork that goes along with it, forms, all these things that got to be uploaded into the system for the court process. So a lot of times when they're there, they're catching up on previous calls from, from what happened, transpired on their shift, so.
And sometimes you're certain.
I know you don't like, when you drive by and you see it, it's, they're actually doing things, you just don't see them in the car typing.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of an obvious thing, you have to document the call. And so people should recognize that there's only so many hours a day that has to be done in those time periods. There's still, there's a police presence and people complain a lot that there's an increase in people coming from out of town and stealing cars and going. Without the police presence, that's going to increase for, you know, so. So I, me personally would like to see, I like seeing them there and I think it, it adds to. adds to, you know, keeping people, you know, at bay that might do something they shouldn't do.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Madam Mayor, if I could add one thing too, I'd just like to remember that barely two years ago, when we were sitting here, you know, there was a great public demonstration about wanting an increase in police presence and police staff because of the increase in some of the property crime that's been taking place. And this council was responsive to that, and that's gone into the last couple of budgets.
Right. Okay. All right. So, we're just gonna go down the line and ask, I'm just gonna start with Craig and kinda go down the line to see once, what ideas you have for cutting, cuts on the budget. And we'll just start with you.
Well, I, unfortunately, I forgot my binder, but I don't know, there's, there were some good points that, that's already been acknowledged from the town manager with, you know, coming to that agreement where animal control is pretty big. That was huge, even though that, since we switched over to East Haven, they've been very beneficial and they work with us well, so.
Well, that's good to hear, I know you're on the force and...
Well, because I've dealt with both, and a lot of people were unhappy with Branford, but I dealt with both, and one time we had a call up East Haven because Branford wouldn't help us out with a situation where we had someone barricaded in a house with a pit bull. We called up East Haven, they went right in there, they took the dog out, we went in there and took the person out of there, you know, for the mom. And so, I was pretty happy to, you know, we, we worked out with them. But, that's about it, I, you know, I've been actually in training, so I haven't been able to look at much.
Okay, that's fair.
I'm sorry, Craig, you can't do that?
Do what?
As a police officer, because I know that, I've heard that people want the police to sit there and be the animal control.
Bruce, I know where you're going with this, but the whole problem is, there's this different situation. We're not trained to do that, because the first thing we're trained is, with dogs coming at us, what's the first thing that's gonna happen? And everybody's not gonna be happy with those results. Those animal control people are highly trained and professionally trained on handling animals, so when they go in there, they get that dog, they bring it out, or whatever, whatever could be in there, because sometimes, you know, you're dealing with all sorts of things in this town, so, and they do it very well. Us, our first reaction is protect ourselves or protect people around us, and, you know, and that's it, so there's only one ending.
And to mention...
And I don't wanna do that, because I'm a dog lover.
Yeah, and to mention other things we deal with in this town, I was driving to work, I work in East Hartford, I go down Northford Road, and then the first time in my life I almost hit two cows coming across the street over by the farm, and I had to call dispatch, like, yeah, I don't know if you know, nothing, I thought I was gonna have to deal with them, but again, that's, that might be an animal control concern when they're gonna have to go out and, and...
When I worked in New Haven, I, when I came here, I got, I, I think I almost got hit by a bison up on Bezuto's land there, and I, I was like, what was that? And someone told me one of, one of their animals got loose, and then someone told me that a horse got loose. I said, what do I do with a horse? I don't, never dealt with those, and the animal people, I actually followed up the farmers and they're very good at what they have, but, you know, animal control, they're, they're best at what they do, and at East Haven, I am like really happy with them, because every time, at 3:00 in the morning, I've had something, dispatcher says, oh, I don't think they're gonna come, because that's what they're used to before, and this woman came out and she, we ended up getting two little beagles that were barking the whole night, finding them in the woods, and probably saved them from any predator that probably would've ate them, because they're puppies, and of course, I took a picture with them, because they're so adorable, but I, I was, it was just great.
Thank you.
So, I'm happy when you stay there.
Just wanna clarify that what you guys do isn't animal control.
Yeah, we're not, no.
Well, and, and the other thing, North Branford did have their own animal control years ago.
Right, I was gonna say that too.
It was by the Public Works. And so, to establish our own department, to have a building, officers, vehicles and everything else, it would be far more costly than what our contract is with East Haven. And these are the types of services that the state strongly urges you to regionalize with other towns for these benefits, because you just cannot, all towns cannot afford to do these services, and we were very fortunate that East Haven had room in their budget to do this and was willing to do negotiations with us and came up with our original contract that we've had, it'll be two years in September with them, but there was something in the original contract that we could renegotiate with them after 18 months of service, because they didn't, and we didn't really know what our call volume was with Branford. And so, that was a big thing in our contract, and, you know, thank you, Mike, for continuing, you know, to look at that and to call them, and they came to the table, and we were able to negotiate a lower price, and it's good to hear from the police department, because they're the ones that get the calls from people sometimes. Sometimes they do call animal control directly, but they also do call the police department. It's good to hear that there's a good working relationship with them and, and everything, so, thank you for that. Okay, Marie?
I guess I, I would like to start off by saying that I really like the idea of the department as deciding if we have to tell them a certain amount, but I feel more comfortable letting them make the decision as to where the cut should be. I appreciate that list that we got today, and if we tell, tell them all that they have to cut a little more, again, I feel, I don't wanna tell them where to cut, I think they should make those decisions. One of the questions I have for Anthony, and maybe I missed it, that I think it's 293,000 or something for higher, for fire hydrants, is that a contract with the Regional Water Authority that's, so, there's no chance of cutting some of that money?
No, they charge us so much per hydrant, so much per linear foot of, of the pipe.
And when you, it's, it's something in there about they, there's a reduction because of condos, I mean, they're, they're taking care of the, of the hydrants at condo associations?
No, about, about 20 years ago, the condos had separate arrangements with the water authority, and they paid a much higher rate, and they had a little lower quality service as a private fire, private fire engine, basically. What the town decided to do was extend our umbrella over those hydrants, they're now considered town hydrants, and then we build back the condo associations for the fee. It saves the condos, it's a low, lower fee, gets a better service, and it's, it's better all the way around.
Well, see, I would argue with that, because I'm the president of Montgomery Village condo association, and they do not take care of our condos. And when I had, when we had one hit, they refused to help, so that's why I'm questioning what, if they're getting some kind of reduction because of doing, taking care of condos. We had to, we even have to pay ourselves to have them opened up and checked, so that's, I was just wondering if that amount was a contract.
So, does that...
We could pursue it, including them into the umbrella. I could reach out to the water company and see if we can capture their hydrants and then build them back.
So, so they might not be under the...
If Marie says no, I...
I, I can tell you right now, they do not take care of the hydrants at Montgomery Village.
Oh, so it's not all kind of...
That's why I'm just curious.
Where farms, there's, there's several that they do take care of.
I was just curious when I saw that amount of money in there.
Is there any opportunity to renegotiate that kind? How often, I've never seen that contract come up.
Well, I, I just happened to go through every page, and I, we hadn't talked about that during our budget sessions, and it kinda hit me as a large number.
I don't believe that there's a contract, I believe it's just that...
Well, I think, I would like to look at that.
Yeah.
I could explore and see what the options are.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're asking for a reduction in their sewer use fees from us.
They're just setting up an arbitrary fee that we have built.
Yeah, like, and, you know, we lose a lot of land space in town because of Lake Gallard and everything.
That's not just, they have been, that number.
Yes, I, I think it's worth exploring to see what the possibility is on that.
Okay, and it's also something that works, anytime there's these arbitrary costs that we're spending, we've always spent, we have to look each of them and say, okay, are these still relevant? Not something we have to look, is it still open, is something that we can reduce?
Right.
It's hard to, it's a part of regular business, we may not know that something comes up all the time, it's something we can change.
We don't get enough pilot money from them, but that's a, that's a discussion for another time.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess my other thought was looking at the amount of money we are spending in technology, can we take a second look, is there someplace where we can do some more cutting? That is a large, that is also a large number as I went through the budget. I guess technology, but is it possible that we're duplicating, and I know, I think that's another place that we should look. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff?
So, we talked about this at length, there's, there's not an easy answer. Simply, we have to spend less and we have to look and make hard cuts, so it's gonna be on some hours, and we're gonna ask some departments to look towards hours. I do think it's appropriate to ask and to continue to ask the department heads that who know their departments the best to help us make those cuts and reductions where they can, where that can be necessary. Us, sitting up here, we are the final fiduciaries on it, and we, we wanna make sure that these cuts are plausible and, or I should say, are viable to do so, but if they're plausible, only the department heads know that. I, we talked about the reduction in the refuse collection and bringing it to one time a year, I think that takes some dollars down, about $15,000 down. I think it's probably something we can reduce to just one. I'm actually in the other, the opposite camp, that I believe in revenue more than I do cuts. I come from the corporate world, and I think that this town needs to start looking at revenue for the future. We're gonna make cuts, and these cuts are gonna feel good, or they're not. They're not going to be huge, and they're not going to be as impactful as they want them to be. The mill rate's gone up, and it's gonna continue to go up every year, because that's how things work, you know, things get more expensive. Unfortunately, the state has revalued and evaluated on the properties in this home, made it more expensive to live here. The only way to, to stop that is by getting more revenue in here. Cuts are gonna take services away, and I'm sure we can continue, we can cut a library, we can cut a person, we can take a officer off the, off the force, we can do all these different things, but it's not gonna make a big impact, and still be bringing revenue. We've talked about this over and over again. And we start to build in this town so that we have revenues coming in that aren't just from the pockets of the people that live here. And every single person on this board who is doing this and a volunteer is paying, just as those folks that are out there listening to us. We care about this, we, we don't wanna pay more either, but we, we recognize that, unfortunately, it's a necessity. So, I think it's, we, we wanna be careful that, you know, the old adage that you'd, don't cut your nose off to spite your face, that these cuts may be something that we do today, but hurts in the future and the growth of this town, and the trajectory of this town. So, I think that's something we have to, you know, take into consideration and think about. What's the trajectory of this town, why do people wanna continue to come to this town and stay in this town? If it doesn't have any resources and it's just a piece of land, maybe people don't stay, or, you know. Now, that's the way I look at it, but I do think that we need to, each department head needs to look into it further and see where there's some areas that they can find some cuts. I'll continue to help them do so.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
So, I was actually gonna ask for a raise.
Okay.
Greg, being on the council, we, we make so much money.
Do you want two bottles of water at a meeting instead of one?
Does the bottle come out of your pocket?
Actually, it does, I don't charge the town for it, I buy it.
But he refills them after the meeting, so.
Not with water.
Just hope you get the same bottled beverage next week.
So, I, I'm, obviously, so there were some things that I actually wrote down. One of them actually is related to the library. I'm not a big believer in closing a library. I visit the library, I use the library, I like going to Northford, I live up in Northford. I have gone to the library here in North Ram. One of my ideas is to alternate sets, this way we don't have to close down a library. I believe that a, you know, the library, one could be open on one Saturday in Northford, the other, the next Saturday here in North Ram. So, I believe it would be two Saturdays a month that they would be closed. So, I, I believe that would save the salaries, there would be savings there. This way, we don't have to, have to shut down a library.
Okay, so I, I noticed in the proposed, or what the library, library gave 2,000, you know, proposed $2,000 for part-time wages. Lauren, can you just explain how you came up with that?
The 2,000 is proposed reductions was for the part-time account, that was actually for the Sunday closures to account for that. If you do choose to go with the alternating Saturdays, we can reduce that account even further. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I could certainly come back to that with you for next meeting.
Okay, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Okay, so, I asked the town, I asked Mike to provide us with a list of, you know, town employees, and in the, in the last 11 years, if the numbers are right, we've increased our employment by 53 people. So, I think we need to really look at that and see if that's, if that's accurate. Number one, is it accurate? But that's the numbers I was given, I sorted it, I sorted it by department, by year. We started off in 2015, there was, there's some I didn't include. If it was one department, one employee, and it was like that for, I didn't include that. But, the number was 93, and now it's 146. So, there might be something in there that needs to be looked at. Further suggestions would be, you know, reducing, possibly reducing some head count in, in departments, possibly, these are, I have these listed as discussion points, I'm not saying what we should, we should discuss them. And, you know, if we reduce the library, that could be 12, 12 people, based on my numbers. Now, I don't know if they're accurate.
You mean, if we closed the library, is that what you're...
Yeah, reduce the library. I would think we might wanna pause on a police car, we might wanna pause on the fire truck. Then there was, there was some, some budget funding for town hall security, some budget funding for pavement, and there was something that's titled Town, Townwide Generator, and then some education paving. I was taking the line, the column down that was coming out of budget funding, which affects the, the mill rate, and it came to about $379,000. Whether we can reduce all of that, I do not know, but it's something we should look at, because it could have an impact. But, definitely, you know, we should look at, you know, where we are with, with the size of our departments, and is it necessary?
Okay, so, just, I, we all got a copy of the list of employees that Tom had requested, and when I looked at it, I also, I looked at it and highlighted all of our part-time employees versus full-time employees. And there are some departments that have a lot of part-time employees, but those are departments also that generate income from those part-time employees. And so, that is something that you have to look at also, so, so, and also in that list, you know, they listed, which is, you know, anyone that gets paid, so the clerks, or to the, all of our boards and commissions who are very part-time, those are listed as employees, but they could be, they're listed as a part-time employee, but they're on the list of employees. So, you know, all boards and commissions, when they have the public meetings, have a clerk to them. And it might be one clerk, and they serve several different boards and commissions on there, but they're the clerk that is taking the minutes and everything. So, those types of employees are listed on there. Part-time help, I know Public Works hires seasonal help, so those employees are in there. The library has seasonal, Park and Rec has seasonal, but they're all listed as employees. So, that is something that we have to take a look at as to whether they're part-time or full-time in the employee count, and then also exactly what is their role and are they generating income? And is their positions basically paid for because of the money that is generated by the programs that they service on there? So, that's, that's a critical piece in looking at employee counts. It's, it's not always just black and white, well, you increased by 53, but exactly where were those employees on there? So, but those were good suggestions also on this, on the CIP account to look at things, and I'll address some of that when it comes to me as far as additional funding from the state and things like that. So, while... So Walt, do you have any?
Yeah, this is incredibly hard because I don't think any of us enjoy cutting anything, but, you know, we have to. I have four key things that I would look, like to look at would be holding off on some of the vehicles, cutting workforce by five to 10% in some areas. This is coming from somebody whose wife is a librarian. Close the library. And look at the insurance buyout, either reduce it or eliminate it.
So, we have talked about the, in technical terms, it's called payment in lieu of benefits. And that's the buyout on the insurance. And a lot of that right now is driven by contracts. And so it's hard to just say, yes, we'll get rid of it. It, it, it does need to be looked at, but we can't look at all of them because it's built into a contract right now. And it's a discussion we need to have with the town attorney as far as what is the cost of opening a contract, just to look at that. Because it's not as easy as opening a contract and saying, we're going to get rid of that or change the method to it. There's a lot more that goes into it. And it's definitely a topic that we can have discussion on, but I can tell you it's not going to happen between now and June 1st, when we have to finalize the budget. Because there's a lot that goes into it. And it's, but it definitely opens the door for discussion in regards to it and to see once where we can go and how that, and how it gets handled. And I know, you know, a resident had written in about that and said that no other town in the state does it. And that definitely is wrong because a lot of, a lot of municipalities and a lot of private businesses also do it. And they all have different methods of how they handle it, but it is an incentive to actually save you money. Because if someone doesn't take the insurance, that person, you save more by giving them a little bit than by having them on your insurance policy on there. So there are many different methods to it on there. So it's definitely something that we are talking about and will look at, but most likely it's not going to happen in this budget. And the town attorney will be talking to us and getting us information in regards to that. So, okay. Thank you, Walt. Nick, do you have any?
Okay. A few things. Just, I'm going to piggyback on a lot of what everybody else said because I'm going last and mainly because everybody had some really great ideas. I haven't disagreed with anything that anybody up here said. Couple of things I came up with, in a sense, and I didn't come up with this one, with the library closure. And the reason I bring this up, if you read the letters, if you go on Facebook, it's like non-stop. Close the library. We're a small town. Why do we need two libraries? And I understand that. And I do use the libraries and I am a fan of the libraries. But I would be curious, and I'm not saying this, that we would have this for June 1st, can we see what the cost savings would be if we had closed the library and we consolidated to one and see if, for the future, if it's even worthwhile? Because it might be something that everybody's asking for. And then when you run the numbers, you find out it's not really, it's like a drop in the bucket. But I, I think it would be good just for the public and everybody to know that, hey, I understand the idea, but it's not going to amount to much.
Can I add something to that? We talked about this. One of the buildings, which is the library in Northford, I believe, can't be closed. Well, it cannot be used for anything else.
Right.
That piece of property was gifted to the town of North Bramford a very long time ago from the church. And it can only be used for the purposes of what it's been used for. So these are real, again, we're hot and bothered, we want to make these adjustments, I get it. But sometimes it's not even viable to do it. And as Nick made a point too, sometimes those changes are drops in the bucket. So yes, good idea, something we can look into, certainly something you can look at the numbers for, but realistically, it may not even be viable to do A and B. It may not really bring, move the needle and then end up having less of a service. I know a lot of folks that use the library. We use the library for more than what you're just thinking of, which are books we go there and read. It's a community center. It's a cooling and heating center. It has a purpose for a lot of other municipal meetings as well as crafts and kids, girl scouts, boy scouts. It's being used for a litany of things. It's not just going in there and reading books and doing book reports like we did. It's used for a lot of different things. And it, and parents are there constantly with their kids doing educational seminars, all sorts of things. So when we talk about closing a library, remember, we're a long town that has, you know, that has two very different areas. It may not be worth doing so, you know. So look into the numbers, not saying we don't look at it, but it's been a popular idea to close a library. It's going to change everything. We're not talking likely a very big change, but let's look at the numbers and figure that out.
And then in, I also love the idea, I mean, I know cuts need to be made, but increasing revenue wherever we can. One thing that I've thought of, and I've actually thought of this for a long time, and having a few Board of Education members here really brought it to the forefront. It's a question I just have in general. Do we, do we rent out our auditorium for use, our fields and stuff like that? Because it just seems, and I always think of this every year, that my daughter's dance school, which is in Bramford, they go to East Haven High School for their dance recital. And it seems all these, all these dance studios, I know like three of them off the top of my head that all use East Haven. Why aren't they using ours? You know, is that, is that something that, you know, we can generate a little revenue there? Same with the fields and stuff like that, outside sporting events, other schools, things like that. Also, along those lines with, I know the Board of Ed runs the summer camp at TVS. It's a great camp. My daughter goes at least a few weeks every year. She'll be going a few weeks, probably again this year. But now our Park and Rec also runs a camp, which I believe is a little bit cheaper. Can we, on the Park and Rec side, increase our camp fees a little bit? I mean, not enough to, you know, put people in the poorhouse to where they can't afford it, but maybe there's a little bit more there and that could, you know, also help cover the cost for some of the part-time employees. Other things with our police department, our road jobs, you know, the private duty officers. Have we looked at what our admin fees are? By admin fees, I mean what we're charging the company. I know working in East Hartford, our admin fees are pretty high. We charge for the use of the car, we charge a hire. Basically, it means that the UI, ever, all these companies, what they're paying to have the officer, not what the officer who's working it makes, but that's a revenue generator too. And, you know, making sure that they're hiring officers when we have these jobs and not flaggers. You can, you can generate revenue there. And then another one that everybody keeps talking about the blight and the Central Plaza and stuff, and I know we've talked about this in the past. Have fines been assessed to these buildings, to these landlords? Can tax liens be done? I mean, I know we have a blight ordinance now. I made a complaint on one, a residential one, and that was like two months ago. And the most this guy's done is put a tarp over his rusted-out limousine that's been there probably since the 70s. And what, like, what are we doing with that?
So, since you enacted the blight ordinance in the summer, we have been all over the owner of Central Plaza. He has been assessed quite a few fines and they continue to increase, not just in appearance but in safety. He's also now getting building code violations. You may remember the building that houses the current Town Line liquor. There was a structural issue out in front and back in February, he was ordered to address it. And when he had begun to, and the edifice was peeled back, part of it collapsed. And he was forced to close the building for three days while repairs were made. There's another building in the plaza that also has structural issues and he's had temporary supports up. He has until May 25th, after, this is about a 90-day process, to finally put those supports and get them repaired and fixed so that it's no longer a safety hazard. And to date, he has not done that. And that will likely, something I was going to talk to the council a little bit later on about, obviously, but, and the businesses that are there, we've been in constant contact with all of them while this is going on. But we may have to close that building until he addresses those. Interestingly enough, a car struck one of the buildings today. Two of the businesses, two of the businesses, Sonny's Nails and Poppy's Restaurant, who would have been impacted by this building closure, the other is not his restaurant, would have been closed if we hit that May 25th deadline. And now they're closed because there's a structural issue there because of the impact of the vehicle. So, so regardless of the outcome on the 25th, they're closed right now because of the structural concerns and the safety concerns. Those are our primary concerns. This is a, you know, this is a place where our businesses have been long-suffering there with conditions. The town deserves better, the patrons deserve better, the businesses deserve better, and we are working on it. In concert with the town attorney, I mean, we've been, we've been putting all possible pressure for correction out there since we've gotten that blight ordinance. And in fact, if the blight ordinance hadn't been enacted, it probably wouldn't have given us the N we needed for the structural and building concerns that we have out there. So a lot's being done and, and we'll continue to do it.
Can we invite the owner here for one of our meetings, would you show up?
He won't even answer them half the time, so, you know.
Be careful about how I characterize this. But the owner is not highly responsive until, you know, until we had the blight ordinance, he basically only responded to our fire marshal. Now with the fines escalating things, he is been more responsive and we've been able to get him, but we haven't been able to get him to take a lot of action that we need quickly enough. And he lives in New Jersey. So he's not somebody who lives here, he's not somebody who we have access to. And I, you know, certainly we could invite him, but I think it's, we can't get him to show up for some of the things we'd like to. I doubt he's going to come here to get, you know, pilloried by everybody, but, yeah.
My last thing, a more question for the mayor. I know, talking about cutting down to the one pool, what about the sheet metal with the metal collection? Can we, if we cut that down or out, would there be a cost savings there?
I thought it was part of the bulk pickup, they just separated, which I don't know.
Oh, the, the scrap metal.
Scrap metal. And the reason I ask is because, I mean, I live in the middle of nowhere, kind of, and I could put metal out on any given week and there'll be about four scrappers coming by to grab it. Yeah, so, I mean, that, a lot of times takes care of itself and if not, just put a bulk pickup.
I could look at that and see if there's a difference that would make.
I thought it was part of it, they just.
It may be. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they were parsing that in the number they gave us, but I can, I could double check on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mike tells me they do consider it part of bulk pickup, so you just clear it.
All right. So, I, I do have a few ideas also in regards to the budget. So I have been in contact with our state rep, Benny Candelora. Unfortunately, the state's budget will not be finalized before June 1st. There has been talk in the Appropriations Committee that the ECS money that was cut in North Bramford would be restored, which is $254,000. Personally, I don't feel comfortable counting on that money before they finalize their budget because you don't know what could happen in the 11th hour. And they could, you know, the promises are, yeah, 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 we're going to do it and then all of a sudden something happens and we don't get it and we counted on it. But my suggestion would be, so there was, it was the ECS money, $254,000, and then some LOSEP money, which is about $90,000.
It's a town aid rule, $91,000.
How much is it?
Town aid rule.
Oh, town aid.
91.
So, they're both on the table at the state, but they could, you know, we could end up with it or we could not. If we counted on it and then didn't get it, we're in a bigger hole. So I would prefer to look at the CIP budget and what's under budget funds and maybe we can make some cuts on there with the thought process that if we end up getting the money, we can then reinstate some of those projects back using the money that we get. It would still have an impact on our mill rate by cutting them, but we would still be able to do them if we got the money on there. So what I was thinking of was on, um, payment, what is it? Payment overlay? Here we, yes. So payment overlay, which is in Public Works, we have a budget total and, and, you know, a lot of this does already have state money in it. So under budget funds though, we have $238,000 of budget funds. So my suggestion would be to cut, you know, 80,000, 85,000, approximately what we might get in town aid money, cut that from the budget funds. And if we get the town aid money back, can we increase? Is that a possibility that we just reinstate it, but it would be under town aid instead of budget funds on there? The, the other spot is the big pavement project at TVES. So most of that pavement project right now is under fund balance, so it's not affected by it. There is $50,000 under budget funds. Is to cut that $50,000. We would know prior to them starting the project, because I don't think they're starting it until in July or whatever. I mean, they're doing the high school first, which is under the, the high school project. And then I believe they're moving up to TVES. Is to cut that and then if we get the ECS money in there, we could use some of that money to fund the rest of that project. Or one of the other things I had asked for from Anthony is if there's any capital projects that we can close out that have money in it, that we can close out. And if we have money in other capital projects that's already been allocated, is to allocate to the project so that we can just move ahead with it and, and get that project done. So do you?
I haven't got an answer for you yet, though.
Okay.
There will be some money left, though.
Okay. So that would be a suggestion also. I see that the fire department, as part of their cuts, cut the Lucas from the budget. I thought your demonstration at one of our budget workshops was very important and was very telling.
At that point in time, we had one that we thought was beyond repair and manufacturer was having difficulty finding parts, but they were able to repair it. So that's why I didn't need to eliminate this one.
So we don't need it?
Don't need it.
We don't need it? Okay. Because otherwise I was going to say if we got the money, that would be something that I would reinstate on there. So can you, what is the townwide generator in building monitoring for 7500? What was that?
We've had problems in our large buildings where randomly the generators don't work when we need them to work. We all know the history we've had with MBIS situation. We have, that's, this is going to pay for monitoring for the three generators. The MBIS generator functions as our shelter and where our communications all come out of, the police station and Public Works. It'd be a monitoring thing to see that A, they exercise when they're supposed to exercise. It'd be a monitoring thing to see that, A, they exercise when they're supposed to exercise, so that we not caught an emergency with no generator, because that's happened. We've had situations where all generators have failed for various reasons. We had one last winter at the ambulance building, the battery was dead. We would never have known that unless the power went out and it didn't kick on. So this is, this proposal was to do, I think, like seven or eight buildings, the firehouses, all the different stations that have generators. This was a three proposal, our three biggest ones, you know, between the police station, public works, and MBIS, to have a monitoring on that shows you, okay, it exercises, it's working fine, if there's a problem, it'll alert you. So it's kind of like a peace of mind, if you want to call it that? Because we have been burned in the past, the generators not working when we needed them to work. That's all of it.
So it's a maintenance service, basically?
It's a maintenance, it's a monitoring service that sends out, when, okay, your generator is running tonight, it's on its exercise on Monday night, so, okay, boom. It ran for half hour, beautiful. If it's all, something, if the battery dies, it'll send you a notice versus having to wait for the power to go out. And your generator, it's kind of an issue.
It's kind of something you gotta.
It's kind of, yeah, it's kind of something. And also, this was seen, if we cut it down from the original seven or eight, whatever the number was, down to three, just to kind of ease into it, to see if it made sense, and to get it working. That was the idea behind it. Could it be cut? We've lived without it forever, it's not the end of the world. It's just peace of mind that we have been burned, with having generators not work when we needed them to work. So it was seen as a way to.
Is it possible to do periodic checks on these generators manually? I mean, we can have, you know, someone in that location, I'm not asking.
No, it's more, it's more in depth than that.
Yeah.
It's more in depth than that.
We do do that, but like you said, it's, we actually have one on our generator now that senses codes out. So even if you go out every month and look at it, stuff goes wrong.
Yep, I got it. That's pretty important stuff.
Yeah, but it doesn't want to go off.
So that's what, those would be my suggestions on the CIP list in regards to the operating One area that I would look at again is we, in contingency. So we already started, the proposal was $325,000 in contingency, and what that covers is any contracts that were negotiated during the year and were just settled, it's more that were just settled. So we do have one contract that we just approved at our last meeting, but those increases were not part of the budget because it wasn't, the contract wasn't approved yet. So we have to make up, we have to put that money into the budget. So contingency covers that, it covers the administrator raises, there's just a dollar amount in there, the town manager is in charge of reviews for all of the administrators, and, you know, he has to live within the amount of money that we give him and say, this is what you're allocated. So there's a dollar amount in there. So we would look at that to reduce that pot of money. And then also, the balance of it, and the majority of it, is for, it's just kind of like our savings account. You know, it's an account in case something goes wrong. We can't just dip into the general fund to pay for it, we have to have money allocated. But if I read the budget book correctly, when it said contingency and where we were at this year, that's 69,000, that's in there as of when the budget book was printed. Is that what's left in contingency right now from this current year?
Correct.
So I think there's room to bring that number down, and department heads just need to know that this is like a true emergency that happens, that you come and it's not in your budget, something happens, you have to make your case, and if we have the money in contingency, we can pay for it if we have a really bad year, and a lot of department has something, things go wrong and they come before us on here, and if we have to do, if it's something that has to be done, we can always get to the point where we freeze budgets to get the money from within budgets if we don't have enough money left in contingency. And I think we just, we have to reduce that amount in contingency. So from the 325, we already reduced 60 in our, in our first budget. So we're already down to 265 in there. So I think we need to come up with a number to reduce, reduce that some more as far as what our starting balance would be for emergencies and the pot of money that would be used for administrators raises. The public work raises, they're already set, so that dollar man has to come out of there anyway. That contract is negotiated. We do not have any contract negotiations coming up for this fiscal year, so we don't have any other ones to allocate for on there. So my suggestion would be, is that we look at that and come up with a number.
Is there a minimum amount of money that we have to leave in contingency? Or is it just, it's an arbitrary?
It's an arbitrary number that we can pick.
It's a safety net.
It's a safety net, and it's.
So it's already different?
Well, it gives you the ability, as Mayor mentioned, if something happens.
And if we don't spend it all, it goes back into the general fund. So, like, if we have roughly $70,000 left, and we have, you know, five weeks left of the fiscal year, this was a good year.
Right.
So whatever's left will go back into the general fund, so that's what I was looking at, to reduce the amount to start with for next year.
70,000?
Well, no, I was just, I didn't, I don't have a number in mind.
Oh. Well, we don't have to talk about numbers tonight.
Right, but it's something to think about. You know, it's my suggestion, and I'm, so if we reduced it by, we have to come up with a number of what we are going to tell the town manager to use for admin raises, and you're talking 17? How many admin are in that group?
Twenty.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Was it seventeen? It was like twenty.
Okay. So there's 17 administrators that are in the pot, so we have to think of that, and then what we want as our safety net, and then the public works.
I have a question, and maybe I'll face here. We haven't gotten the audit from last year. Is it possible that there's some surplus money in it from last year? Do we know that yet?
Not yet.
But it.
No, there's no surplus, and we don't know?
We don't know the answer. There will be surplus.
So does that go, doesn't that go into the general fund?
Fund balance.
Yeah. Yes. Yes, it goes into the fund balance, and that's on, like, our CIP, when it says the CIP is through the fund balance, that's where we've taken it out of, is that.
So we don't know if we have any?
Do we have a travel ID? Is it a large number, a small number?
I don't have a number yet.
Medium number?
Itsy-bitsy number?
Yeah. Do we have an idea when?
I'll try to nail it. Next Friday, we're closing the books.
Next Friday?
Twenty ninth.
Okay, so 11 months after, a little bit better than the year before.
The next day, you're gonna have to start the next one.
So, okay. The other area is in the police department, and so there's an officer that the chief has told us about, he came before us to hire, that they were trying to get on board prior to July 1st, and it's through the, Chief, if you can just come up, and what program is that?
Opioid.
Right. But what's the state program?
It's basically, it's easiest to remember, is the Connecticut State Narcan task force, which is now BSI, they call it, but they do a wealth of different things.
Okay, so this is the program that the chief came and talked to us about, where if we dedicate a member to that task force, there is reimbursement back to the town every month that the officer is with them. They do have the ability to, if we need them on staff, to pull them back into North Bramford on there, but the big thing is, is that you, the town gets the resources of this whole department on there. And we do have a fund that we get money from, and it's the opioid fund. We have over $100,000 in that fund. We had asked, we approved to give the police department 25,000 to cover this person, to start them earlier than July 1st. The chief has been doing interviews, they are not on board yet, they're still going through the process. Chances of them having to use that 25,000 in this fiscal year is probably slim, that they'll, if they do use any of the money, it would be very minimal. So that account would have most of that money still left in it. So my proposal would be to take $50,000 from the opioid fund to pay, you know, the part of the salary of this person in the police department. Because what is going, we've had this money for a couple of years and haven't used it, and if they see that we're not using it, we will stop getting the money as long as they're funding it. And the other use of that money is, I think, is for the Narcan, which I know Jimmy has, the chief has a line item for Narcan in his budget. I think that should just come directly out of the opioid fund, and I also think that the police department should coordinate with the schools, because I know they have Narcan in the schools also. So whatever, and I know it's probably not a large number, but I think whoever, I believe it's the nursing supervisor who takes care of ordering the Narcan and doing all of that stuff, they should coordinate with the police department and just have that, let them do it this way, because in the schools, they probably use it less than the police department does. So before it gets expired and everything else, you know, the chief could.
Yeah, so by state statute, we actually, we use double for every occurrence we go to, now. So not only if we use Narcan or Narcan, however you want to say it, but we also have to leave at least one behind for a possible next use when we're not there. So that's by state statute that we have to do that now.
Yeah.
Is the state reimbursing on the opioid fund every year?
That was off a settlement, and it's, they tell us it's good for the next 10, 15 to 20 years for the money they got from the settlement. But what they also said, if you're not using the money, then they're taking the money back to use it in.
They'll give it to other towns. So you know where it's good.
Yeah.
Chief, what do you mean double it? Double it.
So if we go to an overdose response and we use our Narcan, then, so that one's gone, we can reuse it again, but we also have to leave, even if that person's transported, we have to leave with the people there another dose, at least another dose of Narcan.
So if they overdose again, and they can give it to them.
Oh, self-administry?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now everyone's a double one that we're going through. So they're about $100 a box, and then you're just, you're doubling up every single dose.
Chief?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, something, yeah.
Chief, how many towns are on that task force that our officers are gonna be going to?
There is approximately 25 officers that are assigned to that task force. So from various agencies, I could get you the list, but yeah. Yeah, but between the state police and then other jurisdictions within here, so.
So for that one officer that we're giving up, we're actually gaining 35.
Plus a check back to the town for wherever it gets a positive. It doesn't go to us, it goes to the.
So when do you estimate that you'll have an officer to go?
I have one assigned right now, it's going, they have to go through another background process, and we're waiting for that to clear, and then we'll be good.
So it'll be after, you figure after July, you think?
That officer will be there before, and I'll have to cover those funds until then. So we'll see.
So, so we, so there is money there, and I think it's a good use of that money.
You don't want blood back, that?
Pardon me?
You don't want to have blood back.
No. And also for the Narcan, that, you know, I know the police department, in the scheme of things, it's not a large budget item, but at this point in time, every dollar helps.
How much do you spend a year on it? Just curious.
We're budgeted for about $3,000 a year. That was before we had to start doubling up the dosage per call, so.
Yeah, so.
We buy it as well, the fire.
Yeah, the fire department as well.
Oh, so, yes, so have the fire department, I don't know how much is in your budget for line item on that, but.
I'll have to check. It's a need, it's more in the ambulance budget.
Okay, that's, that's fine, but I think it should all come out of this opioid account. That's what it's there for, to use, and the best use of this money, I think, is that officer.
So is there, does it expire, like, what's the expiration? So if you purchase it today, is it good for a year, is it good for a month?
I believe they're about, I'll have to look at one. I think they're good for almost two years. So even if they do expire, then what we use is, we put them aside for training, because we have to recertify with our, and that's part of it, so then those become used for training, so we don't really just throw them away in the garbage. But then you have to be careful on heat and cold, depending on what your storage is.
Yeah.
All sorts of things, so.
Yeah. So I think, because the schools now carry Narcan in the schools also, I think it should just all run through the police department. I mean, we, we don't have a lot of schools, so it's not a big item.
Yeah, and normally when we order, it's within 24 hours, unless we see some type of epidemic spread, and then you have to start jockeying your, your stuff.
Right.
But it's all against, what kind of quality product is out there, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So that's one of my suggestions. And another one of my suggestions is in the police pension account. We've already made one putt in next year's estimated pension, and that's, that's a moving target, and it's just an estimate, and it's only for the people that are in the defined benefit plan. And so how that's calculated is, they just have to estimate how many of those people are going to take extra duty. And because, and that's, that's what makes it a moving target. On all the other people that are in the defined contribution plan, it's easy, it's just a percentage of salary, but on this, they have to estimate and they guess. But they do have prior history, so they can see what, over the last couple of years, where that has stood, are, were we over, were we under, what happens with it. So I would just like Anthony to look at this year's budget, where we're at on this year's budget.
Gotcha.
Are we under, and if so, by what? And we can kind of make an estimate for next year, if we can cut more from that budget. But the other thing we have talked about in pension committee, because we know that we're underfunded on our defined benefit plans, whether it's police, town employees, fire, whatever, is that at the end of the year, if there's money left in that pension account number, it doesn't get spent on other things, like, oh, let's go out and spend it. If we're, if we overestimate it and we have money, it goes to pension to pay down on the pension fund. Because we know at some point in time, we have to make up that anyway, so let's just start doing that.
What's the amount we're off?
It's.
Multiple millions.
Yeah. It's substantial.
Get that for you.
It's been, you know, it didn't happen just now, it's been.
Years.
Years. You know, something that, you know, before all of us were on the council.
Is there, is there a percentage, Anthony?
I'll get the number for you.
It's kind of a scary number, huh?
We're like 50 to 55% funded, and you want to be 75 to, you're not gonna be 100% unless you're like in Fairfield County. You want to be 75 to 80% to be comfortable, and we've never been 75 to 80%.
Would it ever come back and haunt us?
No, because we make the annual contributions the actuary tells us to make. And at the end of the day, we'll get, we'll get fully funded, it's a matter of, we gotta get there.
Yeah.
And as the mayor said, you have surplus money, that's the perfect use to put it towards that, to kind of help that. It's like a payment of mortgage off early, kind of thing.
As long as it doesn't haunt us. How do you say that no matter what, it will be funded then? Like, how do you, how do you know that?
Because the way the actuaries to tell us how much to put in every year, they have a. Because the way the actuaries to tell us how much to put in every year, they have, they have a target to get to a hundred percent funding. It's like a twenty-year cycle if they would is. So they, they have what they tell us to put in every year, coupled with what the employee puts in, coupled with the investment earnings, at the end of a twenty-year span, will be, will be fully funded.
So that, what changes is, of course, the, you know, what your earnings are on there, you know, they're just estimates based on history, you know, they could either do much better than what you anticipated, or they could.
Moving nothing.
Yeah. And also, you know, the timing of people retiring and, and, you know, what they end up choosing as their benefit on there. So there's a lot of things that play into it, but that's what the actuary does and gives us, and that's, that is one thing that this council and all previous councils have been very strict on, is if they tell you, you need to put in, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, we put, we don't cut it. We, we, we put in what they tell us, because that's where you will get into problems. And that's how other surrounding communities have gotten into huge problems, because that's where they cut to save money and then.
Tough year, can't put it in. Tough year, can't put it in, and then keep snowballs, and then before you know it, you're issuing pension bonds, it, it's just a nightmare. And like, as the mayor mentioned, this, in the thirty years I've been here, this council has never wavered from whatever the actuary said, you put it in, you put it.
So we're putting in what we need to put in.
Exactly. That's why, it's not, not a problem. It's just, the optics of it are, why are you only fifty percent funded? And as the mayor kind of alluded to, some years we had some lower than predicted returns, that was the third part of that, the funding source, you know, if we predicted we're going to earn eight percent, and we earned one percent or even lost money, that kind of offsets the whole balance of life, and then plays out over the twenty-year span to get caught up, and a little bit more every year of it put in and such. So it's, the actuary has it all calculated out, but it's, it's a problem, and if we have surplus cash, that's where it should go to.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anthony.
So, so, so those are, those are my ideas. I, I think in just rough guessing as to, you know, between what departments have already, you know, said that they, we could do, and ideas that have come here that the town manager, you know, needs to get us some numbers on, because we, we don't know what they are yet on there. In order to, to do the best that, you know, I think, and what, you know, everyone will have their own opinion as to what substantial is. Everyone has a different opinion of what that is. But I would just like to ask the town manager to talk to his department heads and come back to us with some suggestions of, we all know where the true money is going to be saved is in staff, unfortunately. And if you can meet with your department heads and come back with some suggestions, and I, I personally don't have a number or a head count or anything like that, is when you talk to them, see once, are there full-time employees, part-time employees, you know, whatever the case is, come back with some recommendations that we can discuss.
You know, I'd just like to say, based on some of those comments that came in the email, I, I think that this town has tried very hard, I think the assistant town manager has tried very hard, to bring in businesses. It's just a difficult time right now. You know, we've lost some businesses because it's a nationwide loss, but I think that the town has made a real effort. I think the Economic Development Commission has made an effort. I, it's not like people, you know, aren't trying to bring in more revenue. I think one of the things that hurts us is we're not, we don't have a, an exit off of ninety-five, like a lot of the shoreline times, I mean, towns do, and I, I just think, though, that they'd have to get, get credit, because I think you've tried real hard to bring in business, and you've brought in some businesses, but unfortunately, in this economic times, we're also losing businesses, but so is everybody else. But I think they have made the effort.
Rory does entertain calls all the time, you know, he said at, at the meetings that he's entertained calls, but some of them are looking for certain, you know, type of building, which we don't have. Bigger buildings.
It's, it's true, you know, we, Rory takes a lot of calls from, from businesses, and you know, we're constantly working in conjunction, particularly with the shoreline and the New Haven Chamber, you know, and, and finding businesses that are interested in coming here, and a lot of times, we don't have something that suits exactly what their, you know, either their needs are or their future expansion plans are. But, you know, if I could just comment on that, because you know, Marie brought up a great point, you know, I, I see some of the Facebook stuff too, and you know, they talk about closures in town, you know, we've got, of course, we're losing the Agway, TD Bank, the Rite Aid closures, but those are all part of national or regional closures. None of them have cited any conditions in North Branford in particular that have forced them to, you know, close businesses in, you know, Chicago or Massachusetts. I mean, these are large restructuring things that have different, uh, different things associated with them. And, you know, on the positive side of the ledger, just in the last couple of years, I mean, I could think of lots of businesses that we've been doing ribbon cuttings for that we've successfully gotten here, Sparks Cycle Works, Ariel's Barber Shop, Poppy's Coffee and Kitchen, Poppy's Bakery.
That's a major one.
Free ones, a big manufacturing thing that filled the, the Brooklyn Whittle Building.
Yeah. They had to do a lot of renovations.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, yep, that's a, that's a big deal, and, and these are, these are, these are big wins for us. So, so yeah, we've, we've made a positive impact there, and I think the council's well aware, there's, you know, future economic development possibilities that are going to be coming before you very shortly.
So if you can have that discussion with your department heads, and if you can get us the information prior to the meeting on Tuesday night, just so that we have a chance to look at it before the meeting, as your suggestions or your recommendations to us, so we have time to review it.
And just to reiterate, there is no, there is no figure that you're targeting in terms of.
I don't have one, no. It's just, we're, we're looking at it to see. I, I don't, I don't know if anyone else has, I know, you know, Tom did a lot.
It's really big.
How many ones do you have, a hundred and forty?
No, those numbers are not accurate. I went back, I got twenty years of data on here, and in two thousand and five, we had seventy-one full-time employees, this year, this year we have eighty-four. So it's thirteen employees and thirteen in.
That's why, that's why I clarified when I said when I made, you know, started talking, that these numbers are accurate. So I don't know why we've.
A lot of the ads are part-time.
Well, depends on what you're looking for, that's it. You ask, if you ask all the employees forever and ever, that's what I totally gave you, but if you ask for specific points in time, I could have given you a point in time.
I did, I did.
Yeah, it was twenty-fifteen, but it was both part-time and full-time, so.
That wasn't the right list?
So that's a list of all the employees that have been here, some are still here, some have gone.
It's a list of all the.
The budget books, the budget books have, every year has, has the last page, but has a personnel account that mirrors the sheets in the budget. You went to public works and say, there's X amount of employees, that's on the sheet in the back of the book.
Well, if that, if that's the case, that's, that's worse on a whole nother, a whole nother subject, because I asked specifically for what I wanted, and, and I was given it. First, first I noticed an error, and I questioned it, and then I got another list. So again, if we can't come up with the right data, that's, that's troubling to me. So, that's all I got to say, because I spent hours doing that, and if that was the wrong data, that's, that's, I'm a volunteer, I don't get paid.
You sure?
You can cut my, you can cut my salary in half, and it's still zero.
Just making sure. Can we get the new list, the right list? Can we get the right list?
I give you a personnel count by year of each department, that's, mirrors the budget book.
So here's the question, Mike. We have eighty-four full-time employees. That's across North Branford and Northwood, that includes all departments.
Yes, yes.
And they're working how far? Like, I don't think that if, we're not adding any more employees to sit there and assist that, yes?
Not in this budget.
Right. So if we, I, I can't see eliminating any full-time employees, because we're already short, are we not?
We have some, we have a couple of things that we haven't hired back for.
And they're doing double duty?
Yep.
So eliminating any full-time employees, I think would be really difficult. Would actually hurt us, not benefit.
I mean, I think in certain instances, as you know, I mean, I expressed to the council with the cut that was already made in the building department, I think that's going to hurt us. It's going to make, we'll be slower to respond to building permits in a time when we're kind of having a boom here, so that's not good. Those cuts, they have real implications, sure.
Right.
They slow down our productivity or our ability to respond to resident needs, or they just hamper our ability to do what needs to be done.
Absolutely. So what I'm getting at is, if we do these cuts, and these people are already doing double duty, that we can't hear complaints that it's taking too long for somebody to do something within time, is really where I'm going. So if we do make those cuts, do people, what do you, is it, do you want this, or do you want this? Right? What, what do you want? Because you're going to pay for it in other ways. It's going to be painful, as we're really concerned. So I honestly, I don't think cutting employees, if we have eighty-four full-time employees, and they're already doing double duty, I don't think cutting employees, full-time employees is really where to go. So that's my two cents.
We're just exploring all possibilities.
Absolutely, I get it, but I, to, to cut our nose off, to spite our face, isn't something that we should do.
So, okay. So the, the last thing is, Anthony handed out the, because one of the things was debt service, which on the budget, there's nothing we can do on debt service. But just so that people understand, before projects are approved, we do go through this, we get the numbers, the projected numbers of what the project, what we would have to bond for, how we bond for it, and estimated cost on it. And so some of the projects we have right now, they are not fully bonded yet. And we knew going into this process, for the high school and the police department and NBIS, because that was ten million dollars on that project, and communications also, is, we already had a map out of what our debt service would look like, and we knew that it was going to drop off in two thousand and twenty-six. So the idea is, on these projects, when you look at them, you don't want to have large spikes in your debt service, you want to try and keep it even, somewhat even. So you, you will have dips and, you know, it'll go up and down, but you don't want the really huge spikes up. And so I asked Anthony to do a schedule for us as to where we are right now and what's projected based on bonding, so that is what he handed out. And can you just explain this?
Yeah, the shaded columns to the right, there's about eight point seven million dollars left to bond, four point seven five five is the remaining piece of NBHS, three nine five oh, remaining piece from the police department. I worked with Mark Chapman, our financial advisor, and he put together some numbers. So the shaded areas are, you know, assuming it's about a four percent interest rate, again, who knows what the market's going to be in August, but that's the projection that we thought comfortable with now. So you see this year's debt service at the far right, about six point three million dollars, next year it's going to go to six point eight seven three, and then, was it eight seven three or six?
No.
Six seven three. And then six nine eight, and then after that it comes down, six one nine six, six three. So you got a couple more years of serious pain, and then one year of a little bit of repo, you know, and then back to six point three, neighborhood six point two.
So like on your home mortgage, you can pay down on it? Can you do that on bonds?
We have refinanced over the years, it depends on the interest rates. This environment is not conducive to that, but if you turn back the clock seven to ten years ago, we refinanced all our, our outstanding debt.
Right, but in order to do that, we have to refinance. You can't just say, oh, I have five hundred thousand dollars left this year, so let's just pay down debt.
No.
You have to refinance the bonds in order to do that.
Right.
Which costs money to, when you refinance, but hopefully you do it when the interest rates are down enough.
And it's another thing, you cover the cost and then some, at the end, you're saving money at the end of the day.
Correct. Right, so you just, you can't just pay down the debt.
It's like a very mortgage.
Yeah, you just, no prepayments.
Yeah. I mean, I know, because that, that has been suggested, that we should just pay down the debt if we have extra money, you know, not borrow anything and pay down early, but the only way you can do that is if you refinance, and the market conditions have to be conducive to do that.
Right, the rates are not in our favor now.
Right. Okay, all right. So do, so do you anticipate in two thousand and twenty-five that we, that we bond the rest of these projects?
Yeah, you don't want to incur more interest costs.
Okay, so just, so it'll be, they'll be.
Stop the clock.
They'll be, they'll be fully bonded at that point in time on there.
Right. And then the, the remaining question that we talked about is working with Rusty to see what's outstanding on the high school specifically, before the state audits, everything else, is there going to be any, any cost that we're going to be potentially, you know.
Yeah, that aren't part of the project.
Part of the project, aren't reimbursable.
Right.
We're going to cover those internally, but I think he's working on getting a list together for us.
Okay. All right. So does anyone else have any other questions in regards to the budget?
I just want to clarify something, to go back to council, you know, the police contract spells out what we can add on for admin costs. It's pension, workers' comp, and Medicare.
Okay. Seventy-one percent.
It's hot.
So where are you up there?
Yes, and that, and actually, that money does go into a separate account?
Yeah, extra duty fund, yep.
Yeah. And the same thing with the cars, right? Didn't we have a fund for?
Police vehicle use fund, right, that you've used to pay by cars out of.
Correct, correct, but that, we've used that fund a lot in recent years, and there's probably not a lot of money left in that.
At what cost to taxpayers, we purchased five patrol vehicles for the town.
Right.
That's on the backs of the officers working on the road.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so the next item is finalization of the special meeting for budget action. So in order to have enough time for the residents to know what we were doing on the budget and taking action, I was in conference with the town manager, so we just set the date so that we could get everything firmed up, and it is next Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, at six thirty, and it will be held in, at North Branford High School in the cafeteria. So they have a larger space there in anticipation of more, knowing that that's going to be where budget cuts are made, where more residents can come out. And that's also in our discussions, why we set up the separate email address that they can put their comments in and stuff. So do we need a motion to approve this, or it's already set and we just?
It's already set, that is how we call it.
Okay. Yep. So it's just, the, the meeting will be next Tuesday at six thirty in the high school cafeteria, and that has all been confirmed with the school system as far as availability. All right, so let's move on to item C, disposition of certain town properties, and this is six seventy-two Totucket Road. This was the, the one parcel out of the five parcels that came before us. This is the one parcel that is a building lot, and the town assessor has done an assessment, appraisal of this property, and it's in our packet, we've gone over this. We have discussed this prior, and. We have discussed this prior, and our discussion at that time was that if we're selling this property, that we would just do sealed bids and set a minimum price. And then once, once we agree on that, then they will take, the town manager will take care of getting it out there and specifying and putting everything else. So based on the information that the assessor has here, it is, I think it's easy, my personal opinion is to do a sealed bid on it and just let whoever entered, doing an auction, I think there's more cost involved in.
Yeah, you'd have to get a Realtor the other way and.
The town attorney would like to.
I'm gonna suggest that if you want, we can go into executive session to discuss, because discussion of the price, if it can affect the sale, you may wanna do that in an executive session if you're gonna have a conversation, just a suggestion.
That's a great suggestion. Okay. So the, the other piece of property that, and we are working on some of the other pieces, they're very, they're small pieces, and the town manager has been working with the landowners on each side of them to come up with a price. And then once that's done, then the town attorney will draw up paperwork, and that'll come before us when that's all set. And the one large piece that's left is the Old Town Hall site, fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road. We have discussed this, we kinda put it on hold during budget season, it will come back to us next month, as far as, we just have to determine what we want, you know, how we wanna do it, what we wanna put in the RFP when we put it out to bid for developers, what, if we want any restrictions on it, that type of thing. But just so the public knows, is that we are selling that piece of property for development, but we do have some say as far as what we would like there, the type of structure, mixed use, whatever, we can come up with those parameters on there. So that, so it is moving, that is moving forward also on there. So since we have an executive session tonight, can we talk about this one, Brian, in executive session?
What I would do is, you know, perhaps you just add to your agenda discussing.
Amendment to.
Executive session?
Can I do that now?
Yeah, you wanna?
Yeah, amended stipulated to discuss the land use and sale of fifteen ninety-nine?
Six seventy-two.
Of six seventy-two. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made to amend the agenda to add to executive session the disposition of six seventy-two Totucket Road. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next item is approval of job description change for program coordinator, and this is for the park and rec department. So this is an existing position that we have right now?
Correct, this was the position that was vacated when Sarah Brown was elevated to the assistant director.
Right.
So whenever a position is vacated, before we fill it, we touch base with the department heads and see if they would like to make any changes. This job description hasn't been updated in quite some time, and the director said that the job description wasn't very indicative of the duties that the position was actually fulfilling. And so worked with the director and assistant director and came up with what's before you, ran it by the union, they have no issues with it, so presenting it to you for approval.
Okay, so there's, so on here, because it's, we have one person that's part-time, and the position that was vacated is full-time, but the same job description goes for both positions? Okay. All right. So there is a suggested motion in our packet.
Make the motion that the town council, if we're to adopt the job description presented.
Second. Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, next item is master municipal agreement for rights of way.
Hey, this item is before you, that is pretty much pro forma, it's the renewal of our agreement with the Department of Transportation for MMA, ROA, ROW that we have with DOT. Town attorney's reviewed it, it's recommended for passage for you tonight.
Okay, there is a motion on page eighty-nine of our packet?
I have it. I'll read, I won't read the typo. It says Michael Downs.
I did that myself, too, I'm totally responsible.
So we'll go with that, Michael Downs, town manager is hereby authorized to sign the agreement entitled, master municipal agreement for rights of way projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Palladino, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mike, explain what that is again?
Yeah. So for the, the town to enter into projects with DOT, it allows the town to participate in the right-of-way projects that are funded through them, including the lots of program that we, we use. So that's what it's basically for when we do that.
Okay, thanks. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, next item is a brief review of the charter revision process. We covered, we covered this last one. So it's just, it's basically like timelines. Let me just, let's see, here in our. Okay, so it starts on page one twenty-six of our packet. And I know Lisa Valenti here, the town clerk, has, in our packet is information in regards to how the town charter works and timeframe, and the clock doesn't start ticking until when?
Well, there's different clocks that start ticking once you start, once you appoint, if somebody wants to do things, and then you have to, if you're gonna, if you have any idea that you're gonna do this for this November's election.
No, it's not for the.
I was gonna caution you, that's a very aggressive.
Yeah, no, we, we discussed that at previous meetings, that it would be too much of a tight timeline for this November's election. And so then we have next, the next one would be next November, the November twenty.
Unless you want a special election, but I would not recommend you do that, I'd recommend you do a November election.
Right, because in a special election, you need fifteen percent to come out to vote, but that, the added part of that fifteen percent is they have to vote yes for whatever the proposed changes are.
Right.
Not just fifteen percent to come out to vote, which is a harder mandate to, to get to than just fifteen percent of the rest on there. So.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Are we required to change the charter in any way, shape, or form?
You are not.
No.
There's no timeline, nothing?
There's no periodic, nothing reviewed, nothing, you can do it if and when you see fit.
It's up to the council to decide.
Or when the public petitions you to do that.
So we're not being petitioned, or so is there a reason why we're even looking at this?
The voice of the people.
It came up, I know, a lot online on the Facebook before the budget referendum vote, people complaining, oh, it's not fair, we never get fifteen percent anyway, it needs to be changed, why don't we do a charter revision? I think that's what we first started looking at. The voters came out, and we got twenty percent, so why do we need to have a, I understand that they were talking about it, but as long as people come out and vote.
It's, it's a council decision, it definitely is a council decision, and a lot goes into it. It's not just saying, let's do charter, because you have to, you have to, what do you want? What do, what are you looking to accomplish if you do charter revision? So that's a discussion that we would need to have, and it's, you know, if you open up the charter, every, even though you say, let's just look at A and B, everything is open.
Then your response is open, but you have to have an idea of why you're doing it.
Right, that's why I'm in question.
Right.
And I get it, that the people are, people requesting that, but we just had a vote of an election, and twenty percent of the people came out and voted, so.
Correct.
Right, so I think what you were just going through is, what is charter revision, and how does it, how does it function?
If we're gonna do it, what do we have to do?
Right, right, that's.
Right, right, and it, and it, it wouldn't, even if we started tonight, if we were prepared to do that.
We'll tell them that.
It wouldn't.
No, we wouldn't make November.
We wouldn't make this November, so next year's.
We'll wait till next year if we wanna do it.
Next year's budget referendum would still be the way it is today, because the change would not be in effect for next year on there. So, so we just wanted to get the information out there, this is what it is, so, okay. Next is East Haven animal control contract revision.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, and as has been discussed, you'll remember that when we entered into the agreement with East Haven to take over our animal control services, at that time, both East Haven and we were unsure of the numbers that Branford had presented, and you might recall, it took a long time for them to even produce the numbers. Based on our mutual lack of certainty under those numbers, we baked into the contract a review period after we would get the numbers in and see what it actually looked like when they were serving our town. And it did turn out that we are, they are responding to fewer calls than was anticipated. So I met with Mayor Carfora, took our team over there and met with theirs, and they were, they agreed to reduce our current contract, you may recall that we started off at a hundred and thirty-five thousand with a four percent increments after that. We had budgeted this year for a hundred and forty-six thousand for animal control. Under the new agreement, we'll be paying a hundred and thirty thousand dollars flat fee for this coming fiscal year, and the fiscal year after that, there will be no increase for the following fiscal year, and this is a two-year agreement, which would take effect at the beginning of this coming fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and last for two years, at which point we would renegotiate.
Yeah, it's good that they held no increase in there, and the positive reviews from Councilor Miller is great.
Yeah, I would definitely wanna add too, that, you know, and I was very sure to note that, you know, Emily Higgins and her whole team over there have been phenomenal, every dealing that we have had with them has been top-notch, I think they're extremely professional capable, they've served us very well, and I think the police department backs that up in their interactions with, with them.
Okay, so there is a suggested motion on page one twenty-eight.
And my name is spelled right in this one.
That the North Branford Town Council authorizes town manager Michael P. Downs to sign the updated animal control agreement between the town of North Branford and the town of East Haven, take effect July one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
The motion has been made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next item is award of RFP nine two five zero one five, Twin Lakes Professional Engineering, Lots of Project L O nine eight dash zero 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 one.
So you have a memo in your packets from Chris Holden, you received seven bids for the project, two of them were above what was budgeted, we reviewed all of the proposals, Dan Salentano, Fran Marola, Chris Holden and I, two we weren't satisfied with their qualifications, they didn't cite any experience with Lots of Projects. And then out of the remaining three that were within budget range, Luke's was selected as, you know, the most qualified and lowest cost.
Okay, so this is, this is the product, this is the whole Twin Lakes Road project?
Design, yeah.
The design in that road is being completely redone, and the majority of the cost of this project is by state funding?
Right.
Correct? Our contribution, or our portion, is to pay for the engineer?
That's right.
Okay, so there is a suggested motion on page one thirty-five?
One thirty-six.
Or one thirty, no, one thirty-five on Michael.
Be hereby resolved, the, excuse me, be hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, awards RFP.
That's the next one.
Put your glasses on, that's the one.
Yeah, sure. Hold it, I don't have it here.
I don't have my glasses.
There isn't one.
There is not one there.
Yes, there is.
Last paragraph.
It doesn't say suggested motion.
Oh.
Okay, that's why.
It's not indicated.
There we are.
It says in the paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, my apologies. That the town council, if we're to authorize, that the town manager negotiate and execute an agreement with Lucas Consulting Engineers LLC located in American, Connecticut for professional engineering and associated services related to Twin Lakes Road, Lots of Project L zero nine eight dash zero zero one, with the proposed project cost of one hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars in rates presented in the RFP in the consultation with the town council.
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any other discussion?
This is from one thirty-nine to Rudie, all the way?
No, I didn't see that. It's Twin Lakes Road.
I know, but not in any form.
Yeah.
It's eighty down to the road, right?
Okay, where the road used to be?
So Queech Road?
Queech, uh, Rudie.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next is award of RFP number nine two six zero one three to Munistat Service Incorporated for Bond Advisor. This is the one.
At the suggestion of the council, we went up and did an RFP for our Bond Advisor. We had two responses, our current vendor, Munistat, and Phoenix Advisors, they're two players in this arena in the state, and the current vendor came in actually at a lower cost than what he's charging us currently. So the price of twenty thousand dollars, it was, it was twenty-five thousand, we did the bond sale, bond and note sale last August, so he came in with a sharper pencil, down to twenty thousand this year.
Be hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, awards RFP nine two six zero one three to Munistat Services Inc. at the price per bond and note sale of twenty thousand dollars.
Second. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next is Poco Festival twenty twenty-five, request to hold special event with beer and wine. So there is a.
We're back to just beer and wine now.
Yes, we have a, we, well.
Wasn't there like drinks last time?
Last, last year, there was premixed margaritas, but we have a different vendor that is doing the beer and wine.
That's what we're going with, right? Just beer and wine.
Yes, and any, if there's any changes in that, or? And any, if there's any changes in that, or if there's some deviations, it needs the approval of the police department on there. Because last year, we did sangria, but the police department covered sangria in the idea of wine on there. It just, as part of, all right. Oh, here it is.
All right. So suggested motion is for the Town Council to permit the sale of beer and wine at $2,000 by Potato and Corn Festival.
So, motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next is Appropriation Transfers.
You have two small transfers in front of you, both from the police department. Let me recall that the custodial services at the police department were budgeted in this '24, '25 year as a contractual basis, and a decision was made to hire a part-time employee. So we're moving the money from the other contractual account to the part-time account to cover the gentleman's wages. The second one is to move some overtime from the dispatcher's overtime to the police department overtime, police officer overtime.
Okay. Have a motion?
Result that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the Town Manager and the Treasurer-Finance Director.
Second. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. I just have a request when we have motions like this that are separate from our packet. Can we include these in the minutes, the actual motion like that? Because when you go back to look in the minutes, it doesn't, you don't know what it was, it just says what it, but you don't have the details.
Right.
But if you could just include this and label it as exhibit whatever, it makes it much easier when you have to look something out.
I need to report, too, that should be included, at least it should be included as back up to the minutes.
Yes.
Of course.
Yep. Okay. So the next is Financial Report.
Financial Report for the end of April. Again, things remained positive in North Branford. The ones we typically focus on, tax collections, 100%, 100.6% of budget, 99.4% last year. So that's a good thing. Overall revenue, 98.4% of budget compared to 97.5, another good thing. The expense side of the house on the bottom of the page, just about running on par with last year, 77.9, 77.2. We will have transfers coming for you in June to cover some of the longstanding issues with the insurance and other accounts, technology that have been over expended for most of the year.
Okay. Approval of Tax Refund is the next agenda item. I made the motion that we give a refund to Ian Cuarez and Erica Cuarez in the amount of $4,867.23 as a refund. Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Palladino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We're on citizens' statements and petitions.
Matt Scatino, 63 Glenwood Road. So I just have a couple of questions with the animal shelter. How many calls did you say that we were getting, that we were, that they were getting from the town of North Branford?
When?
On an annual basis?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the data.
Do you have a monthly basis?
I have the reports, but I'd have to go through them.
Okay. Because the $130,000 comes out to be about $2,500 a week. Do you think we use that much a week?
I think it's a pretty good arrangement, actually, yeah, considering what we have to have in place, state mandates that we have to have. This is a significant savings, not only, again, repeated, but we've also saved money from the transfer from when we were at Branford.
Okay. I'm just curious if we use that much, that we have to lock ourselves into $130,000 for two years. You said our calls are significantly lower than what we expected.
They're lower than what was reported at a Branford.
Okay. So I'm just curious as to what those numbers are, to see if it justifies the $2,500 a month, if that could be renegotiated, if the calls are significantly lower.
It was just renegotiated.
That was a point of this function. It was renegotiated because we, so when we changed over from Branford to East Haven, purpose was because there was higher expense, and we were going to be asked to take on capital improvements, which, you know, on the building. So we said, let's make this more affordable throughout Branford. We went to East Haven. Then we didn't have a basis for what it was going to look like. So we had to take the number that we were given from Branford. East Haven was so fortunate to help us and say, okay, we're gonna take a first year. We're gonna charge you X amount, which is a lower rate, and we're gonna take a snapshot and see, well, where are you, what's appropriate? Because if we're charging at this rate and off of this amount of volume, that's appropriate. But if you have lower volume, we'll renegotiate, and that's very well what happened.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the $2,500 a week is a lot of money.
Yeah. It's not cheap, but it's...
Just to make sure that we're actually using the services enough to justify that amount of money.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was Branford charging us? What was the number for Branford?
We're in the 170s.
160, 70, something was the last one, I think. We were no, they were going to renegotiate with us, but they didn't come down anywhere near.
We were gonna pay $170,000 a year for Branford. And now we're down to $130,000 for state...
I'm not saying it's, it's not a good price. I'm just saying...
Just wanted a general idea.
Just do we have that much activity with them?
A lot of times, what happens with the animal control, they get called directly. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't know that unless we asked them anyways. Right. And they have the call reports.
Your question is good. You're asking for activity. You're asking if we have that much activity to justify. We didn't. That's why we renegotiated down to the appropriate level to justify the cost.
Okay.
If we kept on paying the cost we had, we wouldn't justify that expense. That's why they kept to their word.
Okay.
And they renegotiated to a level that was appropriate for the amount of volume.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, you know...
Of course. That's a fair question. But that's exactly where we go.
Yeah. I mean, and then this is like open question. Open season here.
Ms. Scatino, we, the questions you're asking, we literally took this on strong a couple of years ago, the exact same question you're asking. We asked, and we started figuring it out, and the numbers were really high, what we were paying.
Okay.
You know, it was over $500 like a call. I don't know the exact numbers, but it was actually surprising how high it was. So exactly what you're concerned about, what we were concerned about, and we addressed it, saved money, and we might just worked out another contract that actually went down even more. So we kind of threw it through.
And I appreciate your effort and your work.
And we're also paying capital improvements for the Cosgrove Animal Shelter. So, and they were probably going to be looking for more as time went on. Whereas with East Haven, this is strictly a service agreement. If a truck breaks down, a pipe burst or whatever, that's on them. We're just contracting their service.
Right. And that's good for us.
And another thing I would add, too, about that, too, if we remember back when that was going on, that, you know, we had people coming here talking about, they were testifying, trying to keep us with Cosgrove, or talking about, you know, great work they had done in Derby and other places, because they were doing regional work. They were trying to make themselves this preeminent regional shelter.
Gotcha.
And a lot of us felt, certainly when I was on the council, I felt, that they were trying to do this kind of on our back. And so that's why we felt that the price is a little bit large compared to what, you know, we wanted, we wanted service for animal control here. We didn't, you know, we weren't interested in partnering with, that are investing in capital that's not even ours. Those facilities not even in our town, to foot the bill for large capital expenses. So that was part of it.
Okay. My next question. How many hours does an employee have to work to get benefits in the town?
Over 19 hours, I believe.
Okay. So we have, so Tom had mentioned 100, the number that you got was 113 people or something?
All the right numbers down.
So he, so Anthony said that the number is actually a true 84 that are full-time.
84, full-time.
So the rest of that equaling 113 are part-time. Are those part-time people under 19 hours?
Yes. They're not receiving...
So they are. So they're not receiving benefits?
Some are.
Some are, no.
There are some over.
Some are, some are, yeah. So that might be something to look into, to be able to save. If they're supposed to be truly part-time, why would we be paying benefits for them? Do you know how much we pay for the, in lieu of insurance? How many people select that, have selected that option, and how much we're paying for that? I think at one meeting, maybe it was said we pay, we give them 30% of the amount that the town would pay for them to be on the health insurance?
It's 30% of what, what they, so after, so it's, you have the cost of the insurance for the month, less what their premium share is.
Right.
So the remaining balance is the 30% that they get on it.
So do we have an, do we have an idea of how many people are actually taking that? And how many, how much we're paying for that?
In the two unions, clerical and police that do that, we have seven police officers, six clerical, and then four admins.
That's negotiated amongst the union.
I know. It's a union contract.
Right. The, those two contracts are up in '27 and '28 respectively.
Okay. So you have another ways to go with that. Okay. I was just curious as to, you know, is it 25 people or is it two people? You know, I wasn't really sure. And as far as the fire hydrants, with Lake, you know, I've been in town for 60, no, 59 years. So we call it Lake Gaylord. That's how we knew it from way back when. How much, do we get, do we get a discount from them for them being in our town from the Regional Water Authority to use our Lake Gaylord? Like, that we can...
An offset. But it's not a discount.
Like, should we be pushing?
And it's not even our lake, because they, they built it, it's man-made. It was built in 1928.
Okay.
They dammed up and flooded a portion of town after they bought the property. So it's, it wasn't like they came in and there was a lake there and they took it.
So how does the tax work on that?
There is no tax. They pay...
They don't pay any tax to our town?
We get pilot money.
What does that mean?
Payment in lieu of taxes. And it was what I was mentioning that I, earlier, that I don't think is a sufficient amount, but...
So what's payment in lieu of taxes? Like, they only pay us an amount per year?
Yeah. They pay a set scale amount.
Is it state or federal?
It's a state.
State that is given to municipalities that have that portion of their land that has been taken up by a regional...
Yeah, the property is tax exempt. They don't have, they're like a not-for-profit, a hospital, university, where they don't have to pay under the state law property taxes, and the state gives you a pilot payment in lieu of taxes.
Is there a way to renegotiate that?
It's, the state of Connecticut determines that number.
Gotcha.
It's never anywhere near the property, the money if a private individual owned the property.
So then can we negotiate getting better, like...
There's no negotiation.
Even better rates for the hydro hydrants or anything?
They're tax exempt. They're exempt with the lake. It's up to the state to give us pilot money back, and that's the state's determination if, and how much they're giving us. We have no negotiation. We have no...
We can't go to the state and say, this is, you know, a concern.
Every town wants more money from the state, because every town gets pilot, basically, in some form or another.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a big chunk of non-taxable land.
Well, that, that's, you know, what it kind of is not fair to us, though, you know.
I mean, I would say that, you know, it's something to consider, maybe reaching out and writing a letter and seeing if there's something that's concerned citizens. And it has conquered a great deal of our town for, you know, over 100 years almost, and it's taken away the center of the town.
I mean, it's cutting into our taxes in our, in our state. I mean, not, I mean, in our town.
You're not having public services. I know some towns that have universities with tens of thousands of people, buildings that need police, fire, ambulance, public works, and they're getting pilot money, too, pennies on the dollar. So you're lucky this is not really costing you anything to have a lake service-wise. It's really positive.
Our pilot payment last year was like a million and a half from the water company, yes. It's real money.
Yeah. Okay. I think that was it. Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Good questions, actually.